Okay.
Right. Welcome to the November 6th Planning Commission Meeting. Meeting is now called to order. Welcome to all guests. Approval of minutes that you're in your packet. Anybody have any concern with the minutes? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move Chad. Jeff, you have anything?
Yes.
Larry? Bruce? Liz?
No.
Tim?
No.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Tony, the people's case.
Yes, sir. We've got three scheduled for November 21st. At 3 o'clock. The first one is a special exception. Number 511. And it is for a Mykonos Blackthorn Sellers has applied for a special exception to allow a farm, winery, catering facility, and outdoor entertainment, all at the same location. It is located at 2781 San Flat Road, tax map 66, parcel 91, grid 20, and is zoned ag resource.
Anybody have any opinion on this? Bruce, you're hearing the negative. Probably just sent this out right to the...
Oh, yeah.
Bruce, do you have anything you want to say?
They're way too thorough for me.
Okay. What do you think? Are you good? Everybody good? All right. Let's go ahead and send it on down then.
All right.
Right?
Second case is a special exception for a community solar system. It's submitted by Accident Rock Lodge South Solar LLC. They've applied for a special exception for solar generating system community. It's located at, there's no address there. It's along Rock Lodge Road. It's tax map 50, parcel 6, grid 6, and it is also zoned agricultural resource. I believe it's around the 4100 block of Rock Lodge Road.
Is that one of those pieces that's split? Part of it's in the zoning and part of it isn't?
No, it's all in.
All in zoning?
Yeah, all in ag resource.
Anybody have any concern with this one? Tim? How many acres is it? I see there are two of them, so they're split up into two.
The community solars generally are somewhere between 15 and 20 acres. Depending on if they have to break it up because of, say, a stream bed or something like that. These are all on bigger parcels, as you can see there. That's the first one. I believe that one is sitting on like 80 acres, if I'm not mistaken.
Where's the vicinity map? In the corner.
Anybody have one? Voice in a concern here, Chad? You have anything?
No, we have all the solar standards that we went through a few years ago to amend into the zoning ordinance, so they'll have to take all that to the zoning board with landscaping plan, those sort of things.
If anyone wants to put anything on this, not, we'll send it back down. Send it down to zoning commission, planning or zoning board. Thurman?
Third one is also a solar, right? Same company, same landowner. This one is, they have two separate LLCs set up to accommodate these. This one's submitted by Accident Rock Lodge North Solar LLC. And a special exception, again, a solar generating system community. This one is located on a property, 5152 Rock Lodge Road. And the tax map 43, parcel 127, grid 19, also zoned ag resource.
Let me see if I have that one.
So these two solar fields are only maybe a mile apart. This one is at the intersection of Rock Lodge and where Mossar Road meets it.
Already crossing the boat store area?
Uh, yes, sir.
Anybody have any concern with this? Liz? You need anything out of us on this?
I don't think so. We've got all this nailed down and ordered it down, so.
Okay. Send it on down then, Bruce.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Major subdivision.
Yes, so the first thing we have is Pull and Run East, Lot 6. You've all seen this one several times. This is one that's already had final approval or preliminary approval a few years ago, and they're just slowly infilling those lots. So this one is Lot 6. It's right along Thousand Acres Road, so no infrastructure, no road building required.
All in order on this?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any problem with this? Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion second. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move Chad.
Okay. The other one is similar. It's Cathedral Springs, Lot 11. Another one that we've, you've seen several times over the last year or so. It's on Crow's Point Road. Public Utilities hasn't signed the plaques yet, but I talked to them. They were out this week, so they're okay with it. So I told them I'd make sure they place their signature on it before we release the plaques, if you're okay with it.
All good?
Mm-hmm.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move Chad.
Okay. And then one more. This is Pull and Run View East. So this will be the first time you've seen this one. Little bit bigger of a subdivision. It's got two roads that are being created. I just got the road review back from third-party reviewer. The roads are okay. They're working on stormwater right now. This one is a cluster subdivision, so you were already given the yield plan. So the yield plan shows how many lots they could get into conventional zoning, and they aren't asking for any additional lots. They don't have enough acreage for any density bonus. But since if you approve it as a cluster, then they're able to use these areas as open space, up here as well. And then they can get a little smaller lot size, so they cluster them up on this side of the road that way. And this, again, would just be preliminary approval. They would stop to come back and get final approval. They'll have to either build or bond these roads and provide letters of credit for that, if they were bonded, if they don't want to build them.
Can I get a motion on the preliminary plat? Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move Chad.
Okay.
Now we have a project presentation.
Yep.
Is that all you needed in that? That was it, that's right.
Mm-hmm. Now let Sierra come up and do that.
All right. Well, thank you. Turn. Which mouse am I using, Chad? Oh, there we are. Very good, I found it. Get myself set up here. Awesome. So I'm Sierra Wigfield, Senior Planner for Garrett County Government. We are working on our 2024 Garrett County Pathways Connections Initiative, and this is for two different projects. Today, I'm going to demonstrate how to use the project webpage, and I would highly encourage everybody to go to the project website, which is garretcountymd.gov/pathway, to interact with the maps, look at them, take a deeper look. And I'll show you how you can do that, and also to provide some feedback on these projects. So this is actually two separate projects. Both of them are funded by a Maryland Bike Ways Program and Appalachian Regional Development Commission. And the first one is a concept plan, taking a look at the towns of, like, Lockland, Mountain Lake Park, and Oakland, and connecting them. They're the most densely populated area in Garrett County, and, but it is not very walkable. We're really dependent on our cars. So in this area, there's schools, and parks, and neighborhoods, and it's not very safe to get around, like, walking or biking. So this plan is taking a look at that. And ideally, we'll have a plan that'll make recommendations on, like, small changes we can apply to the various areas where we have challenges. And then we can seek out funding for the engineering, and then eventually the construction of each one of those various little pieces. The other portion is a feasibility study to connect Oakland to Harrington Manor State Park, which I think has been on a lot of people's radar. But we're going to start here at the feasibility study level, so then we can gather as much information as we can. So if it does turn out to be feasible, we have more information to apply for the design of it, and then, and kind of know how much things should cost and what things should look like. But that's with the input of the public. So starting with the Maryland 135 project. So here's approximately the project scope. Maryland 135 along this area and a little bit of 219. You know, there's various widths and things. But there's lots of points of interest. So we have everything from the library to the high school and elementary school at Yocley's. We have a bunch of parks, like Woodell Park and the Leo Martin Memorial Park. We also have the Mountain Lake Park Tennis Club, Lockland Heights Wetland Trail, and Lockland Heights Community Park, and as well as Bradford Park. So on the existing conditions map. So like, these are our challenges. Like, right now, like, the people in Lockland are kind of locked in Lockland because of railroad crossing there. But also, like, 135 isn't super pedestrian-friendly. I do see a lot of people walking in it. I'm sure other people do, too. In some places, the shoulders are nice and wide. There's plenty of space to ride a bike or walk. But there's other places where it kind of chokes up and gets a little more narrow. So we have some issues with crossing distance there, the railroad crossing. So working with CSX could be a potential, you know, challenge, but also something we might make a recommendation towards doing. There's also pinch points. I would like to note that this bridge will get replaced in the summer of 2026, and it should have a little more, like, width to it, so it shouldn't be so narrow. But there are potential treatments we can offer to that newer bridge. Then we also have terrain in terms of site distance, like this hill that comes up onto the G Street Park. If you're trying to get across 135, you know, the traffic might not be able to see a pedestrian, depending on its location. And also, there's no, like, real pedestrian crossings through here. Then there's also signal timing. So here at Weber Road and the Shop and Save, which, with the new Shop and Save being developed, that's something that we're considering, like, you know, people may want to walk to this. So how do we make this a little safer? Because on Weber Road, there's no shoulder, really, and it's kind of hard to see people, and you're not, I don't think drivers are necessarily expecting to see walkers in that area. But it would be good to notify them that they're there and, you know, kind of provide a space for them and let the people that are in vehicles, you know, realize that, you know, they either need to go slower or to pay attention. And then there are also the sidewalk gaps that we have here as you enter Oakland. And then there's also some steep slopes, and ideally, it kind of ends at the parking lot for the town of Oakland, here. So, and, so here's like the demonstration portion of this. So on here is a project map, and so this is where we invite the public to come in and tell me, like, in terms of the points of interest, like I mentioned, the library and the school and this and that, but maybe you have another, like, feature that you're like, "Oh, don't forget about this cool place. I'd like to be able to walk or bike to get to, let's say, you know, the trails in Bradford Park." So let's, like, give that a little click there. So click on New Feature for the Points of Interest. And the map is acting really slow, and I drop it in there. Hopefully, it loads faster for you guys. I'm going to look into this. There we go. So, you know, we want to go to Bradford Park. And this is where, like, people can add a comment. And the cool part is you can also add an attachment. Use your phone, take a picture, or add another sort of comment. Or if there's like a safety concern that you have, you can also add a safety and design consideration, and you can add a point on the map, and once again, you can attach it. Or, like, you see a drainage issue, or you're like, "Oh, this sidewalk is a tripping hazard," or, you know, those sort of things, looking for, kind of crowdsourcing this information. So then we can make better recommendations to the people who use them. Moving on to the Oakland to Harrington Manor feasibility study. So like I said, we're really starting from scratch, and the purpose is to figure out how to connect A to B, like Oakland to Harrington Manor. And, like, you know, ultimately, it'd be super cool if you come up with a feasible path, and then we can carry that project forward, and you could be able to walk from Oakland all the way up to Harrington Manor. And then, once you get to Harrington Manor, there's trails that connect you to Swallow Falls, and it just creates this bigger network of places to walk and bike in Garrett County. So clearly, we have some limitations, and we'll discuss those in a minute. So here, as like the crow flies, it's like five miles. And there is an existing trail here at the end of town. So we've got to figure out how to cross the Yocagany River. Like I said, the trail kind of ends there at the Fort Deleese Trail. Then we also have, like, contours and topography that we have to overcome. We're also considering users' experience. That's really what we want the people's input from. Like, the alignment of the trail, I think, will be, like, you know, those will narrow themselves down between, you know, who owns the property and the different challenges between natural resources and those sort of things. But if a lot of people come forward and be like, you know, "We want a mountain biking trail," then that's kind of, like, maybe that's the direction we'll go in. But if I hear from a lot of people, like, "I need a paved surface, I need something that's easy, I have mobility challenges, but I really want to do this," then we're going to try to best, try to find the best compromise between those. Then we have Parcels and Access. All the pink parcels are ones that have a structure on them. Yeah, so we were trying to avoid those. The orange parcels are state lands, and the yellow parcels are natural resource management areas. So they have, and then we have this hatched area, which is the Yocagany Wild and Scenic Corridor, which has restrictions as well on their own, which I think that's the next slide. Then we also have the road crossings, so trying to avoid any conflict with, you know, trying to keep people as safe as they can, or whether they're driving or if they're using an active transportation mode. And then also, in terms of permitting and natural resources, these are other things we're trying to see. We do, these projects are in full support of DNR, and it will ask all, like, it'll help, hopefully answer all of their questions in terms of, like, you know, what, are there any sensitive species in this area? Like, are there any wetlands that are impacted? You know, and the other things, if the project would happen on their lands. And also, it connects them to the DNR State Park. So making sure that those connections are matched up well. And like I said, we also have the Wild and Scenic Corridor, which we want to be, take special care of. And so we have proposed a couple of different alignments that I'll walk you through in terms of, keep in mind, these alignments aren't, you know, they're just feasibility level, and they're proposed, and there are certain, think of them as buffers, like they, that is, that line that we drew isn't, it might move 100 feet to the left or right, north or south. But generally, these are like different approaches that we could take, and, you know, when it comes, to propose some of these. So first, we have the Forest Bind. So you can interact with these maps by, like, zooming in and out and panning around and taking a look at these. So it's this green line that goes, starts at the end of the town of Oakland here, where the Fort Deleese Trail ends, crosses the river, and this is some Oakland, Town of Oakland property, and then follows the Yocagany River up this DNR land, and then has three different spurs, which we'll cover next. We have the Northern Connection, which uses this line right here to the, in connection to the southeast corner of Harrington Manor State Park. We have another one in the middle that kind of comes out here and then crosses Oakland to Harrington Manor Road, and then uses the power line to connect them to the State Park. And then we have a Southern Connection, which just uses the Wildlife Management Area, or, yeah, the Natural Resource Management Area, a portion of it, and then crosses the road, and then comes up to the southwestern portion of Harrington Manor State Park. And then there's this other one that's a Kindness Trail Connection. There's an existing trail here. It's a kindness demonstration trail on DNR property, potentially connect by following the river south. This would be using, like, some CSX, like, you know, right-of-way. So that's, that presents its own set of challenges, but, and then it would take you through this, potentially through some private property that connects them to the southern portion, southwestern portion of the Harrington Manor State Park. And then we have a Mount Nebo Alignment, which uses actually the Oakland Golf Course, and then the Mount Nebo Wildlife Management Area to kind of stay on the eastern side of the Yocagany River until here. But the proposal is crossing this Wild and Scenic Corridor, which that, that could be interesting in terms of permitting. Then we also have a roadside trail proposed, which uses Fingerboard Road and Sanders Lane. Let me zoom in here. Are you dizzy yet? So that is this orange line that kind of follows these roads, which we do have a county right-of-way, but, you know, the prescribed right-of-way is only so wide. And also, I think a lot of people take those roads too fast, but maybe, maybe there's a compromise between making those roads run, making people go slower on those roads and also providing for accommodations for active transportation. But we're still trying to decide. So on here is another map where you can actually explore and click and take a look at who owns what property, take a look at the various alignments. And what I'm really interested, and then we also have a table of all the different options, their advantages, their cons, and, and then lastly, we have a survey, which I'm hoping we have a lot of people fill out, kind of understanding who our trail users are and who our audiences. So it has some questions about that. And we also have an opportunity for you to go in here on this map, and you can actually make a figure and put a point on the map, or two, or, and then comment on if you, you know, if there's any challenges that we have overlooked, or if they have any potential, like, you know, ideas that for us to use, like, it's a great way to contribute. And so... And then you can submit your questions. Get out of here. And then I also have a handful of other public outreach meetings. We'll have a virtual session on November 18th at lunchtime, as well as a couple more open houses at Harrington Manor State Park and at the library. And I'll be at Mountain Lake Park Public Meeting tomorrow night. So any questions, concerns, comments?
Any comments?
I have another question.
Sure.
First of all, I think this is awesome.
Thank you.
It's a great idea. I've explored your website. You guys have done a great, great job with the planning. As far as like the 135 option, do you perceive that as like adding sidewalks? Does it get safer for the public? Or widening the road?
Well, I think in some places, there is a lot of right-of-way, and people go too fast. So maybe for, I'm really curious to see what our consultants come up with in terms of recommendations. I'm not like a traffic engineer by any means, but some things are like road diets, they actually make the road more narrow, makes the car slow down because you don't feel like you can go as fast. But also, maybe having some visual or physical barriers between you and, like, between walkers and the cars, like, that's some sort of treatment. So that could be potentially it. Or it might be a separated trail that goes through, like, the neighborhoods and off to the sides, rather than putting people right on 135. But I think it's going to be a bunch of, ideally, I would love to have a plan with a bunch of little concepts where it's like many projects, and then we can find funding for various parts. And if they're on Maryland 135 or State Highway-owned property, we can tell State Highway, "Hey, you should make this a priority." The people in Garrett County have asked for these projects to be improved. If they're on local town property, then the towns and the county would go for grants to move those projects forward. But certainly take time, but we need to do this planning exercise because I can't just say, "Hey, this isn't working great, do something about it." So now we can, hopefully, we'll have a plan that specifically says, "You should do this about it."
Right. Yeah, I think it's great. Because I, we live along 135. I mean, so many people walking, students, you know, coming from Oakland to get to Southern High School. And I'm always concerned for their safety or getting to work, you know, walking to Shop and City. And so if there is a wave of traffic or make it safer for pedestrians and bicycles, then gets everybody healthier, I think.
Yeah. Win, like, yeah. Thank you.
Do you think you'll have any problem finding the funding to, to start some of these trails or not?
Let's get through this part.
Okay.
And, but I, I think the more support that we have from the public and the stronger these initial plans are, it'll certainly help us write those grants to get that additional funding. And also the partnerships with DNR and State Highway Administration. And, but I think active transportation is funded, and also we have like this Infrastructure Acts, which there is funding to come. It'll be finding match and those sort of things that'll be our biggest challenge. But I'm up for it. It'll certainly take time. I will say, so we're meeting, I know a lot of times that they'll have public outreach for various projects, and then like, there's nothing, and then all of a sudden, there's a plan that's getting approved. I promise, we're not going to do it that way. So you'll hear from me, so I'm doing all this public outreach now through about, like, Thanksgiving time, and then the consultants and I will take all this information that we've gotten, synthesize it, kind of come up with some recommendations, whittle down those alignments, take in the feedback, and then I'll be back in the beginning part of 2025 to show you our recommendations. And then I'll have another chance for people to come and say something about what the recommendations are. So then, you know, like, it's a lot easier to address people's concerns right now because there's not, you know, besides the planning portion, there's not any money, and we're not set on anything. And we can open it up to those discussions where we might have a challenge, and we can fix it, or we can pivot a lot easier now.
Are you, are you prioritizing one or the other, or does that matter?
They're both, I think they're both needed. I would prioritize the easy one, or probably, maybe the one that costs less. But, I mean, at the end of the day, I think I'd love to see all of them.
I looked the one from Harriet to Manor to Town due to a lot of different kind of services, and you have...
Well, I think like the 135 project will really impact a lot of our Garrett County residents, and I think that probably should take priority. I think the Oakland to Harrington Manor one has a lot more opportunity for the economic development and natural resource tourism, which is really important to us. But, you know, it all depends on kind of who you are and where, like, you know, where your priorities lie.
Any other questions? Concerns? Comments?
Yes. The trains from Harrington are open to Harrington. Crosses private property. Proposed. We were not contacted until we seen this on Facebook.
Thanks for bringing that up.
I know you've heard all this, yeah?
No, I think everybody gets to hear it. No, this is a great forum for it. Yeah, so...
But how can you propose to use my property for a project without me knowing?
Take the, I'll, I'll take this as a lesson learned, I guess, in the future, before we... I, I thought I got ahold of property owners, but clearly, it wasn't complete.
Well, there's at least four in there that these lines go across that have not been contacted.
Sure.
Talk to them. So I think that needs redone.
Okay.
Lines need removed. Because my property will not be used.
Okay.
I think this is a good idea, but use the state ground. If this is going to benefit the state park and Oakland, that's who needs to work it out. Use what you own. Don't plan on using mine.
Thank you for the comment, and apologies for... Thank you for the comment, and apologies for catching by surprise, I think.
I think you're looking at a concept more than anything else right at this point.
It don't matter.
I understand that, sir, I'm just saying, it's a concept based on.
Your property.
Right.
Without you knowing, would you not be at this meeting to voice your opinion?
It was not done in malice, and it was not done to affect anybody, it was just a concept put together, and whatever. We haven't even talked about funding.
If this is an op, this is an option, just put it out to the public as an option.
Well, she'll take it off of there.
Now that we know you won't grant any easements, we wouldn't include it, so. It can change, it was just a concept.
My property is on your stuff. And it won't be used. I don't want to step off the board and say that, but you got a line through my place, and nobody contacted me.
Okay, well.
See, there's five now.
There we go. Well, I apologize, I suppose. Like I said, I.
You can find my information right here in this building, just contact me.
Yeah, well, like I said, I, I will. Now I have a better order of operations to send out notices, and then we'll do the public outreach. And like I said, I'm, I'm sorry, it was overlooked. And, but I, I do want to also state that I think Garrett County, like, I think government, and I think culturally, we're not in the business of like, like, taking people's land and using it for public recreation. We're only wanting to work with wa, landowners who are cooperative and want to be a part of the process. And if you aren't, then.
Well, then contact is before you put it out there.
I think that is the reason that we're having these meetings, right? So you can, it's the proper place for you to voice your opinion and say you don't want it. So now it can be taken off.
But.
Anything else? Okay.
Alright, well, thank you guys for your time, appreciate it.
Is that it, Chad, for today?
That's all I had.
Are you sure? Alright. Next meeting is December first, December fourth, at one-thirty. Meeting adjourned, thank you.